Looking at the potential agenda for tonight, just know that number one will come off the agenda. There is a funding source for that, so there is no reason to pass a resolution to cover it. So James has identified that funding source, correct?
Yes.
It's really good tonight, man. But one would come off the agenda altogether because a sensitive budget item for that amount does not require a resolution. And number two will be tabled for the time being as we work out of the intricacies on that and funding of that. What you're looking at there is the access to the equipment they do the fingerprinting with. It's an automatic scan system that sends the information directly to the FBI, et cetera. So it's something we have that's getting antiquated and we're having to look at some potential for updating it or keeping it working as opposed to spending fifty thousand dollars to buy it. But again, tabled for tonight. And then the last item is the only one we'd be considering on the agenda as a stance currently. And that item is basically surplusing some equipment. And that equipment is basically a desk, it's an associated peripheries that the courts have to manage, that they're willing to get rid of at this point, so nothing major. And probably not a lot of money's involved as far as the surplus goes.
Can we do that with all concern?
I would think it's just old desk, is what it is.
It's just, if we're going to do it anyway, there would be no reason we couldn't do it with all concern.
Done.
If that's agreeable.
You have more to do?
Alright. Okay, thank you. And then I'll move farther away from it.
Turn the game now.
Maybe I'll just wait right now until people try to adjust me.
I think based on what we've already gone through, that means right now, we have open
discussion available. And I understand, Councilman Five, you have something to talk about tonight, but at least get to pre-counselor and see where we go forward.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm talking with Leslie a little bit about this as of, I think maybe I might have started the dialogue last night or something like that. So wanting to revisit the Iron Beach Gym deal, okay? I understand it was not approved as presented, but I still think there's some value to it. I know there was an idea tossed around about, okay, could the city reimburse the employees? So city to employees. And Leslie's, you know, she, I think you had some hesitation about that, some work were in there. But she's come back and said, yeah, that's not a good thing. We can't be, you know, reimbursing employees like that. So where I continue to go with this is that if the gym was able, and they're able, and they're doing it already with a couple of other organizations like hotels and apartment complexes, where they're able to, you know, write down that person, what department they're related and what date they came in. And it would basically equate to five dollars per visit. The family, so if, you know, a police officer's wife wanted to go in, they would go in, say Suzie Q four, so-and-so, and then that would constitute a visit under that employee. They would track it, it would be five dollars per visit, not to exceed six hundred and fifty dollars per month, and ultimately not to exceed seven thousand eight hundred dollars per year. So still talking about the same amount, but I'm trying to figure out a way in which we can make it a resolution where basically Iron Beach invoices that particular department for that, for the cost of their associate's visits.
Chair, any comments?
Do you have some information you can share with the rest of the council?
Not really. Not really. Basically, it's the exact same thing that we saw last week, but the method of how Iron Beach gets paid for it is really what the discussion seemed to be about. This would basically be, Iron Beach keeps track of it, the employees, they come, when they come, who comes, what department they come from, and then invoices that particular department, and the city pays Iron Beach for that service essentially.
We would enter into the service agreement with Iron Beach, like this posture that you're discussing now is certainly one way to put it together.
Absolutely. And if the gym wasn't used enough, and they didn't, so maybe X amount of associates came and the bill was six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay, fine, whatever. Maybe more associates used it and the bill was six hundred and seventy-five dollars. They're capped at six fifty per month, whereas not to exceed the seven thousand eight hundred. It's just going to be hard to see where the dollar as a department head chief, you know, it's going to be kind of hard to see like, you know, probably a little difficult to budget for that. But that's something I would unfortunately have to cast upon you.
Are you talking about supplementing their budgets or what?
No, I'm talking about using the budget as already passed.
Alright, well, I will just speak on behalf of the staff. None, absolutely zero of the department heads have supported that concept. They've spoken that they would prefer not to take it out of their budget, that they would rather their budget funds be spent on other things providing state services, so for what's worth. I guess my question is, this is probably the fourth or fifth time now that this has come up. What is the, what is the burning bridge? There's been, you know, support for coming from the department budgets. There's been absolutely no employee that stood up and said, you know, I absolutely believe in this and think that it's important. So I guess my question is more generally is, why is it keep coming up as important?
That's fair. And I know when we talked about this, probably the first time it came up, and Chief, you mentioned when we were talking about it originally, you said, you know, hey, I would just prefer to reimburse the associates. So that's why I was going in that, in that route to begin with. As far as, what's the heartburn? Every time I go in there to see Trudy, I always see city associates working in there. Just this afternoon when I was talking to her, one of the guys that drives the sanitation truck was, was doing some lifting and stuff.
There is one from public works that needs to be.
And so, I mean, if it's, the beauty of it is, is if it doesn't get used, then it doesn't get, there's no pay for it. You literally have to go there in order to get reimbursed, you know, invoiced for it.
Yeah, and I've expressed, I would love nothing more than, you know, fifty percent of our employees used.
Sure.
I could see the benefit to the city and help benefit from that. But with the numbers that we saw presented, I don't know how to justify use of city funds for, for that little bit of use.
I'm looking at the, looking at the budget and I don't see where that we got any way away from each of the departments right now. You know, where are you going to take it from?
It would have to, I would, like I said, unfortunately, I'd have to cast that upon the department heads to, to move their numbers around. I'm not going to, think I'm smart enough to analyze their budget and say, okay, take it out of tires and tubes. I guess I'm just throwing this out there as a last ditch effort. If it gets approved, if it gets approved, if it doesn't, then, you know.
I mean, we just pulled, we just pulled an item off that there's an essential item because we didn't have budgeted funds for, off the agenda tonight, the fingered on the issue. Now what they're going to do is put mandates on it and hope that it lasts another two, two months or three months, but we know sometime in the very near future. Today Frank was over at the shop, changed out of his regular clothes that he comes to work in, put on, on work clothes, and was building a drag for the, for the baseball field because he didn't want to spend the money, he'll buy a new one, so he put some fence wire and some scrap iron and stuff, and they welded it, put it together. So I'm saying, these guys are doing everything they can do to make the dollars go. And I have to listen when they say, you know, their higher priorities for us. Again, I'm not opposed to fitness membership. We have that where our work would have it at, you know, but we expect our employees to use it before we pass. And that's, that's the caveat, you know, they have to use it three times a week on average, or they don't get reimbursed. And I know we can't reimburse, I'm the one that broke that up last time, maybe we could do a reimbursement. But I know we can't do that from the city standpoint, but.
And if you want to, if, a contingency like that is a good one, we could put some sort of qualifier in there that says, okay, if you choose to go once a month and that doesn't qualify. If you choose to go once a week, that doesn't qualify, but you've got to go at least three times a week in order for your department heads to pay the receipts. I mean, Chief, not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to, I mean, is this something you just want me to forget about completely? I mean, just be honest with me, man.
I would just say this, I mean, last year, we, we were coming in pretty tight on my budget.
Okay.
And I expect us to be doing the same this year. And it'd be impossible for me to, to know, you know, in one month, ten people were feeling good, decided they wanted to go work out, and next month, nobody went.
Right.
You know, we certainly have, in my opinion, for my, my department, we have a lot of, a lot needs, more needs than I would put in front of that. Especially based on the feedback I've gotten from the people in the police department that go, and the couple I've talked to that do go, they're like, well, I'm going whether you pay for it or not, because I just enjoy going. So, you know, I wish eighty percent of my department went, but they, they just don't. They won't go whether you're paying or whether they're paying. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay.
You know, if next year, if it's something we could put in a budget to say, hey, you have this much money for your, for your people to go, and that'd be great, but I don't, I don't feel like we're in a position right now, just trying to find the money to get people to go.
Okay. So, guys, thoughts?
Does anybody have comments?
I mean, do I need to trouble to even attempt to put this on the agenda?
Well, you know, I've always, I mean, if we're going, I think it's a benefit for our officers, for our firemen, for our employees, you know, I know people have other places to go where they work out. But I think, because we say we have the best employees in the world, that's what we say. So I think it's just a kind of incentive.
And my four that go, they're going to go, whether you pay for it or they pay for it, they're going to go. But I don't have five or six that are going to go just because you start paying for it.
Right.
At least I haven't had it in the last year.
I think it's just good, good, I thank all the officers and all the citizens and employees, I'm sorry. You say we have the greatest employees in the world and something that we can offer where they're going to.
I don't see that we're getting enough benefit to expend the money, to be honest with you, with the amount of people that are actually going and potentially will go.
What's that one?
Well, you know, I, my, my stance has changed. I say you can't put a price tag on someone's health.
Right.
And as far as what we offer our, our employees, I think we can find the money, i.e. lodging tax. It doesn't matter where we find it, but I think as an incentive to our employees, I think it would benefit. Even if we do have some that will go, no matter what, this may be an incentive for some, some of our other employees to, to go work out. So I, I just think you just can't put a cost on health. You know, it creates good health, it brings employees in to work, you know, being healthy could prevent certain illnesses. I'm not a doctor, but I do know if you keep, if you're, if you're fit, stay in good health, exercise or whatever, and help maintain your body and get healthy. So as an incentive on the city health, I just think that's a good, good gesture. We're not talking about a lot of money.
Hey, everybody comment? James, I'm assuming we're back online here?
Yes.
Okay. If everybody would please move their microphones in place so you can be heard on tape, would appreciate that very much. Councilman Wilson, you got yours? Good enough position, I can barely hear you?
I don't want to be heard on tape.
Well, you need to be, sir, it's a public record for us, so the audience can also hear you.
Well, it's not even on here.
I can barely hear you up here. You don't want them to hear you?
I'm good.
I can barely hear you.
If they can't hear me, then I repeat.
Well, that's, be courteous to the rest of the public to don't make it if you wouldn't use the microphone. Thank you. Any more discussion on that? Is somebody wanting to put it, I don't see it going on the agenda tonight.
No. I'll just ask for this one, as far as what I'm, as far as what I'm going for.
Alright. You want to do some more consideration and then get back and?
Yeah, I mean, I never wanted to take it out of the department heads' budget and everything. I never wanted you to have to deal with that. It's just kind of where I saw the possibility. But if there's another possibility, then we'll cross this bridge and we can go.
Okay. And if need to, Mayor, I'm assuming you could arrange for him to talk to Frank and to Fire Chief, see what their comments are similarities, just so it comes directly from them, if he needs to, just to verify.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. And Councilman London, I believe you had something to hand us right before me?
Yes, yes. I do. I do. Let me introduce you to a young lady. All American, WNBA, Deanna Jackson, come for Dan. I'm going to let her explain the program. We've been talking about youth basketball in Irondale, and, you know, we don't want this to be about just basketball, so we're going to go with Dan, my son is called. I'm going to let her explain the program that we're trying to put together. I had a, we had a meeting with Dr. Pouncy today, and he's all in agreement with it, with the program that we're trying to put together. And I'm going to just let her explain, and then I'll tell you where I come in, where we come in at the end of it.
Well, I'm just going to give you a background. My name is Deanna Jackson, and I play for UAB. My address was retired, I was inducted to the Hall of Fame. I went over to play in the WNBA for six years.
Excuse me, Deanna Jackson, would you take the mic?
I played in the WNBA for six years, Chicago, Indiana, and Chicago Sky. And now I'm also doing, I play overseas also, I went to Turkey, Israel, China, every country you know I have been. And so now I'm back here at home, I call UAB my home because I went to school here. And right now we're starting to have an after-school youth program. It's called We Are One, and we're trying to give back to the community. Speaking with Bobby and John, they've been very helpful. We've met with the superintendent, and everybody's on board, we need something for the youth. Irondale is the only city that don't have a parking rig. And so I'm coming in where I want to try to implement the value of education for work. And it's only going, it's not only going to be just basketball, it's going to be geared towards education, because you got to have an education. And we're going to do mentoring, we have mentors to come in, we're going to have tutoring, we're going to be in the community, doing different things in the community, car washes, everything you think of, we're going to try to do for the youth. And I've been doing it for twenty-plus years, and it's just, crime is hired between three and six. So the after-school youth program will be geared towards the time between three, three o'clock and six. So instead of kids going home and playing a video game, they'll be out in the community, they'll be exercising, they'll get their lesson, and then that's kind of self-explanatory. We need something for the youth. And I'm here, I hope you guys can, you know, come aboard and just help us, and it's going to be a great program. John and Bobby have been very helpful so far. So that's the kind of opportunity program.
Of course, Deanna Jackson.
What's our involvement?
Our involvement?
No ours.
Our involvement, that's, that's all I want.
Those are yours.
Our is pretty simple. After talking to Dr. Pounce, all we have to do is, is get Mayor to go into agreement, just the same agreement we've had in the past, to sign this intergovernmental agreement for the user facility, and the facility she's going to use going out with, he said, Irondale Middle School. We changed our lead, where he said, we start with Irondale Middle School, and then kind of ranks off from there, kind of see how the program works. So our part is for the mayor to go into agreement with, with, just kind of with this, the same order we're saying, and then, because it's insensitive, she's trying to get the program off, and then we can move forward from that.
Leslie, this was the, tonight, you just received it?
Right, I just, I just did get it, but it's similar to what has been discussed at least as recently as last year, and I pulled up some of my correspondence from when we looked at something like this last year, and that concerns, I don't think it changed. The main thing is that through this agreement, the city is agreeing to make whole the school board, and therefore any individuals as well, if there were said to be an injury or anything like that that happens there, the city becomes liable. And there's nothing to protect the city. There's no agreement that we have that I'm aware of with this group, which sounds like a great group, I'm not being critical at all of the group, that the city is kind of out there, one, saying that we're going to provide date, the schedule of dates and times that they need to use the gym, and that we will make sure that they abide by all the school board's rules and regulations, which, they're not us. I mean, we don't really control them, and so I don't know how we are able to say that we will ensure that that's going to happen. And also we're taking on the possible obligation if there are injuries or, or injured, if equipment is damaged, we are responsible for that. And so we're kind of taking on a lot of responsibility for things that are not generally within our control. Having said that, we could potentially work out something where the city enters into an agreement with them, where they agree to provide insurance, and they indemnify, and they're responsible for all of that. And then we revise this agreement with the county, or perhaps better yet, I don't know why, they couldn't perhaps just deal directly with the school board and take the city out of it, because otherwise we're just kind of jumping into something that's outside of our control. There's different ways to skin the cat, but I don't know that we are postured to figure it out as we sit here tonight.
The question, the question then, is that we had this come up before, did we change all that last time?
I said all of the things that I just said.
We didn't change, because we was under agreement this past year.
I had all the emails that I sent saying, these are my concerns, this is what I suggest. And I don't know what happened after that, I don't, I don't recall whether any agreement was ever approved, I don't recall, but one was.
I think we approved it last year.
I have all these emails from March and April where I said exactly what I'm just telling you, that's how I was able to remember it somehow.
Right. Did we approve this agreement last year? This is up for renewal right now?
My understanding was whichever organization used the gym under the city, they would provide their own insurance so that if something happened.
Right.
Saying that, and I don't know if, what organizations used the gym and what insurance contracts went back and forth, but that was how I understood it was the word.
I never saw it beyond that.
Yeah, I never saw it beyond that.
Maybe it's something else, do, do we have an agreement from the past, last year? Was that actually?
I think we did, because the principal kept calling to be able to get that information. I can go back and look at the minutes and see.
I've got copies of all the stuff from last year, about when it was.
What other, what other cities are you going to?
We're looking now. Currently it was in the Birmingham City, it was in Fayetteville, it was on Eastlake, and so now we're just trying to focus on Irondale, and we're just only going here towards the city of Irondale. We have liability insurance, we have different waiver forms that we have to, the kids have to fill out just to make sure, and then, I know, just talking to the principal, she said, was like, we're just going to pick up the kids, we're just going to transport, just say the elementary school, we're going to be at the Irondale Middle School, and we're just going to transport them from the Irondale community. We have to make sure it's just simple, it's sounding like a field trip, and we can transport the kids, but all the forms that we need, we just have to make sure the parents are signed, and we have our own insurance and all liability so far.
So, I mean, it's not the first rodeo, they've done this before. I mean, so here's, here's the thing, this is where we come in, you know, so they won't, won't be charged for the thing, because Irondale kids, we don't want our Irondale kids to be charged for use of Irondale facilities. So this is where this agreement comes in, speaking with Dr. Pounce today, and you can call him tomorrow, we had a conversation, he can tell you tomorrow, where we come in is that if they, we sign this agreement and it goes onto them, then they don't have to pay for the facilities.
But our kids aren't paying the fee, right?
Yes.
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 It's kind of, because they have a school program that they have, I think it's like fifty dollars every week, and so, like I said, it's going to be a lot more in the community, and more hands-on, just traveling, it's just, you know, just kind of in hands what they are to handle.
Right. And, you know, and they pay the fee playing baseball, they pay the fee playing football, they pay the right fee, but that happens.
I would just say that the way it's structured without any further agreement than what we're talking about right here, they do have insurance, which is great, but there's nothing that applies their insurance to cover us. We're not an indemnified party under their insurance. So that insurance company, if we did sue, say they don't sue them, you know, we can't control who the injured family is going to sue, we get sued, their insurance is, is not us. And that is a conceivable set of circumstances, that's the kind of things that we try to make sure.
Do they have this?
Yeah.
So, so as far as the insurance, the liability, I think that's basically what we're talking about here.
Right.
If they can provide the liability insurance as far as what's needed to, to not put the city involved, because I think we're just a go-between to prevent or to try to waive the fee they ordinarily would charge, We Are One, if they did not go into, but basically if they take the city out of it as far as from a liability standpoint, that would be okay.
That would be great, as long as we also revise this agreement to where we're not representing and warranting to the county school board that they're going to follow their rules, and that we won't be, I mean, because what we're saying here is that we're responsible.
We're responsible for them.
Right. And, but we're not controlling them, they're not us, we don't have any kind of written agreement with them, so we don't have any ability to enforce that. That's part of the.
So just by looking at the agreements, again, the agreement is four years old, by looking at the agreement, how can we get, move past what you're just talking about to get the world straight?
Well, again, I can pull up the revised agreement that I submitted last year and make similar changes to this. I don't know whether the school board would agree with them, because I haven't had that discussion with them, but we certainly have that discussion with them, but it can be done, we just have to, we would probably need two agreements. One with the school board, and one with them to where they agree that in exchange, in exchange for the consideration of us doing this at all, that they're going to add us on as an additional insured under their policies, they're going to maintain these levels of insurance. They will be responsible for ensuring that the county school board rules are followed, they will be responsible if any equipment is damaged, they will indemnify us. And that way, when the school board, or an injured child, or anybody like that comes looking to the city, it actually flows through to them where it should be, since they're the ones that get it. So it can be done.
And that's, that's what I want to hear.
It can be done, just not in isolation with this one document.
Is that an ad con?
I don't, I don't think so, I can check on this, double check. But I don't know.
I found where we had it on the agenda on May the first, but I don't have a copy of the agreement with the agenda items.
Is it May the first?
It's May the first of last year.
So move on, move on from here, so.
The red one, she's forty-eighteen, twenty-six.
Let me just make one quick comment. I want to commend Ms. Jackson for just bringing this particular program to the city of Irondale, because it, as an elected official, as a servant of the community, I think this has been a lost cause lately. Lately, we haven't reached out to our kids and tried to bring them in or do anything to enhance or to show them, this is what we can offer you in order to prevent you from going out and doing all these other things that keep Chief busy at night or during the day. I think it's a lost cause, and this is what we need to get back to, or try to get back to. I had kids that grew up in the city, I'm pretty sure all of us, you know, had kids that, that came through here, or whatever the case may be, but I think this is, this has been lost lately, and it has. So I just want to commend you for kind of bringing it back to our attention. It's something that we truly need.
Thank you.
So, that's it, what's the next step?
Let me revise this agreement, and then also deal with you, and, you know, put together an agreement that they would agree to, that contains all the indemnification language, and then I would say submit them both to y'all at the same time, because you don't want to do one without the other.
Right. What we need, an amendment to the agreement, which is a copy from the insurance company showing that we've been added to the policy and what the names are.
Yeah, all that works out on the table.
Alright. And so right now, you're All right. And so right now, you're the coordinating person?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm asking, Dana, what's the, what's your time, timetable on this?
I'm here, all right.
How far is the, uh, we can progress, can we progress?
I was trying to start March fourth, that was the timetable, March fourth, yeah.
Well, we have another council, we can have it read about the end, right? Next council.
Next council.
Okay, thank you.
As long as the county will agree with, they can do the same ones as I suggested.
Last year, the, uh, it was on the May, what did I say, May the first. Uh, agenda, so that's, you know, that's pretty much down the road. Did y'all start that late, late in May?
No, we had all this going down.
Okay. But it didn't make it to our agenda till the last.
Basketball, all this talks in January.
But you didn't, did you actually have any basketball this year?
Normally, it starts in January, yeah. We had it past year, yeah. We normally start in January. It'll be the new, new thing.
This is not a basketball league, though, right?
And it's, it's, it's about, more about our kids getting training, education.
Right, it's not like a part of a league.
No, 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 no.
Training, skills training, education, um, it's, it's, it's all within the.
Yeah.
Mr. Stewart, you're going to go back and look through minutes, and also try to find a copy of the agreement, of course.
Send it to Leslie now.
All right, appreciate that.
Okay.
I found the ones that I sent out.
See what we actually did. I remember the discussion, but I don't remember any finalization.
I can, like I said, they narrowed it down to May first, so I can just go back.
See you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Dana.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
You can go home now.
Any additional items to discuss in pre-council before we adjourn going to regular council? And at this point, we've agreed to put the one item that's on the agenda for tonight as a consent item. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Glad to have a motion to adjourn to a regular council.
Motion.
I was asking.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We'll reconvene. This should call the meeting to order, Council London. Council Spivey, present. Council Bearden.
I'm here.
Council Wilson.
Present.
And myself, present. Council Bearden, would you like to take all the minutes?
Yes, I would. Make a motion that the reading of the minutes for January the fifteenth, twenty nineteen, be canceled, since each member of the council has received the copy and that it be approved or submitted.
Same.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Council Spivey?
Yes, sir, I make a motion for the approval of current bills for payment in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty cents.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. Do we have any professional or consultant reports tonight? Thank you. And Mayor, you're up, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good to see you here. Just a couple of announcements. Town hall meeting coming up this Thursday evening at six o'clock. It's a public meeting, everyone is invited, really an open forum, questions and answers. I'll give a brief overview of the state of the city, and then take questions and answers from any of the residents that have, have questions that you'd like to. So, this Thursday, six o'clock, here in this room. Anne, would you come up, please, and share about a project, I'll give you a minute or two of my time here, project that you're working on?
Hi, my name is Anne Baffiotis. I wanted everyone in the city to be aware of a food drive that is currently going on in Irondale. It's to benefit our Irondale children. It's a backpack program. It's for the children who go home on the weekends with not enough food to eat at home. It's called Fishes Loves Loaves and Loves, and they have here some samples of what is ideal for these children, something they can handle on their own, these little snack packs, things they can put in the microwave, anything they can do for themselves. I have placed boxes here at City Hall, Grants Mill Animal Hospital, Great Surplus, which is up in the station there, and also at Train Smarter, which is off of Haggood Street. So if anyone, you wanna spread the word, let's make this a great February for our children. And if you guys can, when you're at the store, pick up something, one or two extra for the children, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you're doing there in the community, and this is a very worthwhile cause, and so, thank you for reminding us of that. I ask our police chief to come up, he's, has some words to say and presentations to make, if you will, chief. I will say that we, we, over the past several months, we've had some police officers retire. We've had some who have transferred, we have some who have chosen other professions. And we're happy for the service that every one of our staff provides, especially our police and the work that they do. And we're very happy to have some new folks that have joined us over these past months. Chief?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to, and some of these have been here for a few weeks, just with Christmas coming up, didn't really have a chance to get them over here, so you guys could see them and meet them. So at this time, I'm gonna move this chair, just give you a little more room. As I call your name, go ahead and come up here with the person who's gonna be pinning your badge on. Officer Kenneth Powell, and he's, this is his wife, Beth, who's gonna be pinning his badge. His parents, Steve and Cindy, are here. And some of y'all may recognize these two, they brought their horses and rode their horses in our Christmas parade. Officer Powell and his wife did. Officer Powell and his wife, they, he, he was in the, in the parade. Jared Leane, Officer Jared Leane, and he's gonna bring up Addison, is gonna pin his badge on, and also with him are Leila and Anna. And then Officer Kim Holmes, her mom, Tammy Howard, is gonna pin her badge on. And with her are Kenneth and Amy Holmes. And I have one more who actually got in touch with me earlier today, George Hassett, his wife is sick. Otherwise, he, he was going to be here tonight, so I'm gonna try to get him at a later date. And we have, on top of what we see here, I have two brand-new officers that are in the police academy right now. They'll graduate toward the end of March, first of April, and we'll get them up here. All these officers have been doing a great job for the, for the city of Irondale. They all came to us with experience, we didn't send them to the academy. We had two of them came from Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. Kealman Kent and Officer Leane had worked at the Stadia Police Department. So they came with us with experience, and we're able to put them to work right away for the citizens of Irondale. All right, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read you the Alabama Police Officer's oath of office. And after I read that, whoever your significant other is can pin the badge on your police officer. All right? If you will, just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jared Leane.
A certified law enforcement officer in the state of Alabama.
A certified law enforcement officer in the state of Alabama.
Do solemnly swear that I will, to the best of my skill and ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will, to the best of my skill and ability.
Faithfully discharge all duties required of me.
Faithfully discharge all duties required of me.
And execute the orders of my superior officers.
And execute the orders of my superior officers.
And in all cases uphold and enforce the criminal laws.
And in all cases uphold and enforce the criminal laws.
And constitution of the state of Alabama.
And constitution of the state of Alabama.
The ordinances of Irondale.
The ordinances of Irondale.
And criminal laws and constitution of the United States.
And criminal laws and constitution of the United States.
I furthermore do pledge to obey the rules governing the Irondale Police Department.
I do furthermore pledge to uphold the rules governing the Irondale Police Department.
And report all violations of the same.
And report all violations of the same.
That may come to my knowledge.
That may come to my knowledge.
I will not persecute the innocent, nor help shield the guilty.
I will not persecute the innocent, or help shield the guilty.
From punishment.
From punishment.
Neither will I be influenced in the discharge of my duty by fear.
Neither will I, will I be influenced.
In the discharge of my duty by fear. Promise of favor.
Promise of favor.
Or affection.
Or affection.
Or the hope, or offer of reward.
Or the hope, or offer of reward.
In all my deeds.
In all my deeds.
I will be governed by the rules set forth in this testament.
I will be governed by the rules set forth in this testament.
Of my dedication.
Of my dedication.
And by my signature below.
And by my signature below.
I sign to these a pledge of faith.
I sign to these a pledge of faith.
So have you got?
So have you got.
Pin the badge on your police officer. Thank you, guys and girls, I present to you the newest Irondale police officer.
Thank you once again to all of our staff, and especially our police officers for what they do each and every day. We appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so very much. See, our department head, apparently no department head reports tonight. Start off with the council reports, standing committee, the special committees, let's start the council, council one?
Uh, no special committee, uh, oh, no special.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. This can be found on Facebook for those who do it. If not, there's a meeting that has been scheduled on February the twelfth at five thirty. It's happening in the Irondale Library. It's a new group that has recently formed in our community called the Irondale Growers, and each, each meeting will have some sort of theme to it. This month's meeting is a seed swap. So apparently, there's been some seeds that have been donated, as well as just seeds that people had. And there's gonna be some swapping going on. So, really neat group to come out of the Irondale area.
Council Bearden, no report tonight from Wilson?
Yes, real quick, I just want to announce that I'm initiating a new program this year in Irondale community. I've met with Ms. Byington, and we've talked about, you know, kinda starting something with the kids. And the program that I'm implementing is called See It Through. And what this program is, it offers inspirational and guidance, guidance for the students who strive to embrace their educational well-being, experience, and grading scores. And the reason I, you know, came up with this is because, you know, I think Ms. Anne already, she kinda, kinda hit on it earlier. You know, we have these kids out here, and they are our future. And we need to at least do our part to let these kids know that they have someone out here that loves them besides their parents. And the only thing that I can do as a servant of the community is do my part. So I feel as if coming up with a program where we can go out and talk to these kids and give them inspiration, and some kind of guidance, because we all know, as soon as we turn on the TV, we're always hearing about shooting somewhere in some other municipality, so the only thing that we can do is do our part as servants, because that's what we are. We are servants first before we are leaders. And just reach out to these kids and let them know that there's somebody out there that cares for them. So, the program, again, is called See It Through, and I have some of my corporate partners, and of course, I have some of the other leaders in the community that'll be coming and speaking to these kids at least once a quarter, so just want everybody to know what's going on, and hopefully, you know, I'll be calling some of you to come and speak to the kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Only comment tonight, just for informational purposes, Council Spivey, if you and our city clerk could coordinate, and maybe we'll have a quarter well documented for our next meeting, and just do a general quick update of where we stand overall year-to-date. I think it'd just be a good point to get that information out, since the reports are online, but not everybody looks at them.
Understood.
Just make, you know, something simple, just general numbers, not detail. Thank you. Now, do we have any boards or non-council committees? Welcome back, yes, ma'am.
You missed me.
What, you been yelling somewhere?
You didn't miss me. May I turn around? Hi, I'm Tella Schumaker. I am the director of the Irondale Chamber of Commerce. I was not here at the last meeting, so I do want to thank Mayor Moore for being at our last meeting and giving the state of the city. It was a very uplifting address, and I hope that you will come to the town meeting and hear what he has to say. There's a lot of good, positive things going on. Our next meeting is going to be at, we normally meet at Country Country Club, that are still doing work on a pipe that burst in November. I think they got into more than they thought, so we, once again, will be meeting at Irondale Methodist Church on Thursday, Valentine's Day, eleven-thirty to one o'clock, and our speaker is Joyce Brooks. She is a motivational speaker, and her topic is Self-Inflicted Overload. Five Steps to Achieving Work-Life Balance and Becoming Your Very Best. And Bobby, this might be a good person to be a part of your program, and to just. So anyway, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you, Ms. Schumaker. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Okay, shall we go with approval of the agenda?
We make a motion that the agenda be approved with the following actions taking place. Item number one be removed, item number two be taken, and item number three, no consent.
Do I have a second on that motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With that being said, we're still open for public comments on the agenda items only, because that means one that's already going through, the one that has the surplus of furniture for the court system. So again, no comments there, all right? And as we have no agenda items to deliberate on, we'll go again to general public comments. If there's anybody in the audience that needs to make a general comment tonight, you're welcome to come forward, and realize your three minutes of time. Please. Do we still have a microphone, Mayor?
Oh, I can talk.
Oh, you need, we'll turn you her on, the video, thank you, appreciate it.
Come and teach, I can talk. I've already spoken with my city councilman, as well as Mr. Desmond, who's not present tonight, concerning the construction at the corner of Grants Mill and Old Grants Mill. When I mention that, I hope you guys know where it is, because many people around don't really know where it is. It's in my backyard, basically. It's the main entrance into my home. It's the main entrance in for, I would say seventy-five to a hundred home in Stoneridge. Plus seventy-five to a hundred. And we have, once again, unknowingly become, I would say, inconvenience for a period of time that's an open window. The road's closed currently, and there were no signs to tell us that that was going to occur. Even though, when I spoke with Mr. Desmond, I told him that similar situation is close to where I work. There was a sign there, construction hasn't even started yet, but they have a window of time. He told me the construction next to my home would be done by Friday, the road is still closed. Concern. He also said that the people who needed to know were informed legally. I'm a taxpayer. I need to be informed as well, and I feel like I have a right to be. I appreciate my street was patched up again this week, and it continues to be patched with no looking at it being paved anytime soon. So we have concerns about that as a community. And also the construction going on along Grants Mill. I looked at a few things, and I'm not real sure how many of you, I know several of you go up and down it all the time, but I have concerns about the way it looks, and how will it look twenty years from now? Will the buildings be all different? Will they be similar? Are we expecting them to be similar? The church has been there forever, brick church is beautiful. The building next to it is similar, it's a brick front. You know, even though it's got the big garages on the side, it's still, from the road, looks nice. What do we want that four-lane coming through into the heart of Irondale to look like? Are there, are people being held accountable when they do? Are there, are people being held accountable when they do construction?
Yes.
The big yellow building?
Which one are you referring to specifically?
Close to, and I don't know the name of the gas station we all call it, Manny's. The little grocery store.
S and G, I mean, yes, it was, it was built long before.
Yeah, but the yellow building that's next to it, that's being constructed currently.
Talking about what you would insurance.
Insurance.
Right, yeah. The addition on the back.
Gotcha. There is, and I don't know the building code specifically, but there is a call that says that if you're going to build a building, it has to have these various elements in place in order to create some form of uniformality.
And what I looked at today, it appeared that new construction says sixty percent is a Masonry on the front.
I know Masonry is a, is an aspect. I don't know the percentages per se.
Again, this is probably not something we need to get into discussion on at this meeting. It's something that would pass on to the mayor and the city inspector for follow-up.
It is a concern.
But, well, I'm, I'm saying it's not, it's, it falls in the mayor's purview, because the city inspector reports to him, not the city council.
Okay.
And the city inspector would be the one to follow up and look at any new construction.
Okay.
All right.
Can I know that that's going to happen, and?
That what's going to happen?
What Mr. Moreno just said, that you would follow up with the city inspector, and?
Well, yeah, I can tell you now that I'm going to follow up. I know he's been in communication with you already, so I don't.
That's a different, that's a different situation that we're talking about right now.
If you will, if you will submit to me what your questions are, then I'll make sure they're all answered.
Okay. So do we have a timeline on when Old, Old Grants Mill will be reopened?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But there is an easy access for you around it, which is about half a block, might be difference.
No, but.
By McDonald's.
Thank you.
Whatever that street is.
Thank you. Any additional comments from anyone in the audience? All right. If you want to adjourn.
I have one question, Mayor. On that Grants Mill, um, Grants Mill and that, that construction going on. Have you, have we ever done a study, Old Grants Mill, have we done a study, this is dangerous, coming out there? Have we ever done a study on?
Yeah, that question, I was, I don't know that an official traffic study's been done, but I know that question came up at the beginning.
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, the road is where it is, and it, it has the, the rise to it that it has.
Right.
Building, the new building in there didn't change anything.
No, no, it's, it's because it's a dangerous curve. I don't know if you have a traffic study for it.
You guys have been on the council long, and maybe we'll have to answer the question whether you've ever done a study. We haven't done one in the last two years.
So do you think we can get one done?
Uh, that would be up to you all. You have to pay for it if you do it.
That's fine.
We asked.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, as far as the notices, we used to get a copy of the notices of, uh, that's sent out, uh, anytime a road closes or, or whatever the case may be.
Me who got one?
The council, I'm sorry.
I've never gotten one, unless it came before the council.
Yeah, we, we used to get them before the administration. As far as the notices, how many went out, or who, who got the notices to inform those citizens in close proximity? Who, who all got notices? Do you know, do you have this?
There were no individual notices mailed.
Okay. So there was no record of informing anyone that?
There were no individual notices mailed out, if that's what you're asking.
I can answer a part of that. Mr. Desmond stated to me that the fire department, the police department, and the schools possibly were informed.
There are two, there are two ways to come out of that neighborhood. Uh, Stone Ridge neighborhood comes out. You can go left, or you can go right. If you go left, it's less than a half a block to Grants Mill. If you go right, it's about a half a block, and then from, from there, just down the hill to, to Grants Mill. So, you know, we're not talking about downtown city of Birmingham detours. We're talking about a detour that at most is two or three blocks.
Well, I, I don't think that's what she's concerned about. I think she's concerned about, she asked the question, when is the road going to be done?
And I don't know the answer.
Yeah, and that's, that's all she wants, that's what she wants to do. We don't, she's not talking about inconvenience.
I was responding, I was responding to their question.
Yeah, she lives there. We don't live there. She lives there. And it's convenient, inconvenience to her, because she lives there. And everybody else that goes into the neighborhood is an inconvenience.
And as soon as they get those utilities taken care of, they're going to remove the detour.
Yeah, and so, so the question she asked, she just want to know, and I think all of them want to know, in that, in that community, and it's like I would want to know if it was in my neighborhood, if there's a timeline when they're going to be finished with that road. And we don't deal with the inspector, the mayor does. And I think the mayor and the council need to make sure they're informed better. You know, if it's, if it's two days, if it's five days, if it's a week, they just want to have some kind of idea.
Well, I think the mayor agreed if that's one of the questions submitted, he'll get a new response back to it.
I don't know how many times I can say, I don't have a timeline.
He doesn't know right now? He gets after it.
He should know.
The response to it.
I probably shouldn't know that.
Okay?
Maybe you should.
Any additional questions?
I do have one, one question, follow-up. Is it not common practice for us to notify residents that a road's closing around them?
Have you ever gotten one?
I never had a road close around me. Um, so I, I just, it seemed like a good practice. I'm surprised we don't have that practice in place. Obviously, if it hasn't been done historically, then why would you not, I guess, do it already?
I received one at work, because there's a road that will be closed next week, about three weeks ago. I think that even brings more up in me, that I've lived there for over twenty years and have gotten, gotten nothing, and then there's a road that, there's other ways around this road as well.
Well, it should, I mean, as common curses, put a sign up that say, hey, road's closed.
There is a sign.
It says, closed, road was closed.
Closed.
Yeah, road, road says closed. That's a, say road's closed. There's no, no, no heads up. Just sign, sign one day, say road's closed.
Potentially get a lot of that going out when we do our painting programs, so.
But I hope, just hope we get communication out before they close the road, and not the day of.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
All right.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.